So we reset our clock already.
Maintenance.
No Jeremy.
Hi, I'm John.
Chief. How's that puppy?
She's doing pretty well. She's got a sore hip. I worked her pretty hard. Rhode Island. Did you see, did you see that?
I did, sir.
I'm so proud.
Yeah.
I'm blessed, you know, believe.
And it's hard to believe we pay all that money for those dogs and we just get them from there.
She's legit. There were six dogs in that class. Basic human remains and can't hit crime scene going through the past.
That's cool.
And our, our Johnson County Rescue Dog did.
Love it.
Matt Terrell went to me. He said, your dog really bailed you out. I said, yes, sir, he did.
They always do. Make sure that's good to know. Thank you. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the order of this public meeting of the Board of Johnson County Commissioners on this fourteenth day of March two thousand twenty-two at ten o'clock AM. Please pray with us if you care to, and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you bow with me for a moment of prayer, please, dear heavenly Father? We thank you for walking with us, sometimes taking us by the hand and leading us, other times carrying us when we are at our weakness. Your Lord, our country is plagued with drug overdose and the drug abuse, and we're going to have several organizations here today that will work diligently to, to help in that matter. I just pray that you be with all of those organizations, Lord. Make them successful in their efforts. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Johnson County Public Library is first up.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Littner. I'm the Director of the Johnson County Public Library, here to give you our annual year in review of two thousand twenty-one. We're, we're so happy to be here with you today to share the updates with the library. With me is our Board President Kirk Dixler, and he'll be sharing some updates with you as well. Included in your handouts is our latest program guide, and for anybody sitting in the audience, we have some over there, wonderful programs that are available to anyone to join in on March two thousand twenty-two. We also have our infographic with our year in review and then a kind of short list of upcoming programs in the next two months. We have a slideshow of our new Clark Pleasant branch, if we're able to bring that up. Much of the year two thousand twenty-one was working on the construction project for the new Clark Pleasant branch, and we are proud, proud to say that it came in on time and on budget. And I know that we are, luck plays a big part in that right now with a really difficult construction season, but we thought we would share some of the photographs with you if you want to start the slideshow about the, how that new Clark Pleasant branch. This is a picture of our groundbreaking back in March of two thousand twenty, twenty twenty-one, and next slide. We had residents from all over the county sign the last beam before it was put up in the library, and as fate would have it, this is an exposed beam in the library. So if you come to visit, you can go to the children's department and look up by the windows, and you can see the names of the neighborhood folks who've signed the beam. Next slide. All right, so we did a tour right before with a few of our stakeholders of kind of in progress. This was about six months ago. And then I wanted to show you some previous pictures of the old, the old Clark Pleasant branch, which is on Tracy Road and our program space there that was always overcrowded. And our children's space that was also could only fit about two families in it at a time. And then this is a kind of a desk view of the new location, which has three study rooms, a very large community room space that will hold over a hundred people, and then some other programmatic rooms that the community could use as well. We also have a robotics learning lab inside there. We moved the adult learning center to this location. Where adults who need basic education or are learning English as a second language come to visit. This is at our grand opening. We had the ribbon cutting on Saturday, March the fifth, so it's been an extremely busy location these last couple of weeks. It's been open. They've made more than two hundred new library cards, and that is when, on average, you make about sixty a month. So the neighborhood is really responding to the new location. Here you see the new robotics steam lab, which is to help residents of all ages learn about different steam careers with a focus on robotics to kind of accent our advanced manufacturing in the county. And we have a comfortable adult reading, kind of a quiet reading space for adults too. And there's our, our new adult learning center that moved from the downtown location. And again, this is the old children's library at the previous location and our new location. I think the residents have overwhelmingly responded with how much they really enjoy the new branch and all the additional space it offers. And it also includes seven thousand additional children's books because this is one of the fastest growing areas for families in Johnson County. And I think this might be a video, but I do know how slideshows, sometimes we're going to end with a video, but slideshows sometimes are tricky with videos, so. Don't know if we're able to. There we go. And this is on opening day as well. That light display behind those folks is called an ever bright light. It's kind of like a fancy light, bright toy for children to explore colors and textures. And that's our new Clark Pleasant branch. I will mention that our Johnson County Public Library Foundation raised an additional three hundred thousand dollars in special projects funds. So like all the equipment, all the supplies in the robotics learning lab are completely funded with private dollars. They also supported our nature trail to pay for a concrete trail that wraps around the building. Ten laps equals a mile. And we'll be having a community garden in the future. It also is paying for public art. We have a display of photographs from life in Johnson County in our community room. So if you're visiting, we hope you check that out. We're also getting a sculpture at the front of the library and another public art project in the children's program room. So those are things to come as our funding and our programming continues. Now, I think Kirk's going to share a few details.
Hey, good morning. Just want to share with you one of the things that we did this past year within the library system. We've got a lot of things to be proud of. JCPL continues to check out more than one billion items each year, and all over Johnson County, the JCPL staff have made a difference connecting with residents with resources and learning opportunities. We have COVID nineteen flu and vaccination clinics at all of our locations. We supported leadership Johnson County with leadership discussions. We assisted Aspire Community Matters by creating an online resource for students and parents to learn about skilled trades and high demand jobs in Johnson County. We made seed packets available at all locations to share the love of agriculture and home gardening with residents, and we partnered with the Johnson County Soil and Water Conservation District to launch the Little Native Seed Library at the Trafalgar Branch. And we partnered with Johnson County Parks and other city and town municipal parks to launch the Great Park Quest to encourage residents to visit our great park systems. And then Lisa has some updates about things that we have coming up soon.
So you have a lot of fun programs this spring and early summer. On April ninth, we'll have a flag dedication at the new Clark Pleasant branch. We're working with some veterans to do that. On April twentieth, at the Trafalgar Branch, they'll be doing a Hatching Chicks exhibit at the library in conjunction with Purdue Extension Office. April twenty-first and twenty-sixth, we are partnering with the Recycling District of Johnson County for biodiverse gardening programs. May twentieth, we're doing letter writing to our armed forces, people serving in armed forces, and on May twenty-first, we have a Teddy Bear concert with the Indianapolis Symphony. And June eighteenth, we have Voices From The Past storyteller who is recreating the Paul V McNutt, who was a governor and humanitarian at the Johnson County History Museum. And I'm here, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them today.
But the new library is beautiful. It's a nice, nice looking innovation to this community.
Thank you.
I don't think you answered pretty much everything.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. White River Township Fire Protection District petitioned to increase maximum property tax levy.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Jeremy Powell, I'm Chief of the White River Township Fire Protection or Fire Protection District, White River Township Fire Department. And this is Ben Rager, who is our accountant and our community liaison, Mike Hoffman. Johnson County's experienced extraordinary growth, and as Commissioner West alluded to, we've also gotten the public safety challenges that come along with that. The Indian Legislature passed a law that allows us to adjust our maximum tax levy if you grow more than six percent in population in a ten-year period. And the White River Township Fire Protection District has grown twenty-four percent. So we asked the Commissioners to approve a resolution allows us to take those next steps in establishing that maximum tax levy that would be reviewed by the County Council when we present budget rate and levy in the fall.
Do you get, do you have any numbers associated with that increase, Jeremy? What's in your current, your current balance in your CUM fund? What do you project the increase or raise in additional revenue?
I will defer to Ben. He knows those numbers.
Much better than I, yes. First off, it would just be this morning, we just adopted the resolution to increase the maximum tax levy. The district could still adopt the budget and levy it in the fall. If we were to get this additional levy and the council would approve it, it'd be up to about two million dollars of additional annual revenues there for general operations.
Two million dollars additional?
Yes.
What's your fund balance, Ben?
Which one?
CUM cap.
That was million. Yeah, it was a million sixty-two thousand dollars, you're right.
Okay. Mike, you got anything to say?
Yes.
Yes.
I kind of thought you might.
Why did you ask that? I really, you know, it's Chief Bill's birthday, so if you just say okay today, it would be a really good birthday present for him. Make it easier on the rest of us. Our run volume went up twenty-four percent last year, and we're up over twenty percent again this year. So, you know, we're at forty-four percent growth in running out the door in less than a year, and we don't see it getting any better. We're not asking you to spend any more money. We don't know even exactly until we go to the district board and County Council, who holds purse strings, exactly what we need at this point. All we know is the way the law's set up and the way the program is set up is we have to ask your permission to take it to that next step to see exactly what we need. So I really can't give you anything specific today because we don't know yet, but we know if you don't say okay today, it's going to make for a lousy birthday for him, and we can't take it to the next step.
You should state your name to the record, please.
Mike Hoffman.
Well, I, I'm notorious for running Jeremy's day. I've done it many times in the past, but I'll go ahead and move to approve and see where it goes, I guess.
Sorry. I have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Happy birthday, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discover Downtown Franklin.
You get me today to Holly Johnston Franklin Parks and Recreation. Okay, so I'm going to talk about the two parks department ones, and Jess is going to talk about the Discover Downtown Franklin and Holiday Lighting. So with the amphitheater, we're not closing off streets and things like that as we normally did for, for everything. However, we do have a cruise-in event on Saturday, June eleventh, and then we also have oh, that's the only one. Yes. So for that, we would like to use the west slot over here by the, the east slot, sorry, by the annex on the south end. So we're asking that cars, county vehicles be removed for that event on that Saturday, June eleventh. Does that make sense? There's a map. It's the first map.
So you're you're looking at the south, south end?
Yes. Last year we had about three hundred fifty cars. So we'll be parking on West Court Street, Monroe Street, Jackson Street, from Jefferson to Wayne. And then also we're parking down the hill there on Monroe Street going into the amphitheater, and then we also have to use that lot.
The south end. Yeah, the south end. This whole area right here. Should be able to, yeah, we'll take up public parking when we do that, but I don't know where else we put them. You want to do these all in one motion, or do you just want to do one at a time? I think, I think let's go through all the ones that are requesting, if we can. Vintage Fest. And then are these sanctioned by the City of Franklin?
Yes, so I'm, I'm Jessica Giles. I'm the Executive Director for Discover Downtown Franklin, so I'm just going to cover the remaining maps in the packet. So the second request is on behalf of the downtown merchants throwing the fall and spring vintage fests. The funds or the event is covered by our downtown business funds that we hold on behalf of the merchants. They can apply for the funds to use for larger events like that. So we cover their insurance and any sort of like promotional materials or sign the whole harmless of the city. So that's why I'm representing them today. So on the second map, you'll see that it's the lot west of the annex, but the northern half is what they would like to use, and I specifically marked or requested the vehicles be moved the Friday prior to the event, since that's when you guys would be working. So Friday, April twenty-ninth and Friday, September thirtieth, but the events would be happening on the Saturdays following those days, if there are any vehicles in those areas. That is the first request for that. And then flipping to the next page is the annual strawberries on the school event. So this is not, this doesn't have to do with any vehicles being moved. It's just we utilize the courthouse lawn every year. So this time it's on Friday, May twenty-seventh. We wouldn't be closing down as much as we did last year, but we would still, we want to keep things, you know, as tradition. This is our seventeenth year doing it, so we'd still like to serve our strawberry shortcake on the lawn. And that time would begin at seven AM, so pretty bright and early, and then run through the entirety of the day. And then on the following map, you'll see our annual holiday lighting, which this is our sixty-fifth holiday lighting. It's a really big year. And it's not necessarily that we have the lawn closed off, but people tend to mow around and spill over since the stage is placed on West Court Street. So just wanted to give you guys a heads up that there will be activity on the lawn that day. And we're working with Festival Country to sort of maybe implement a couple of key attractions, which if there's, say, like the heat paid for a lighted tree in Whiteland. He mentioned that maybe Festival Country would like to do something for Franklin in a place that would, that would look really nice would be on the lawn. So that could be something that we might want to have a conversation about in the future moving forward. But also in terms of things associated with the holiday lighting, the last images that you'll see are several trees on the courthouse lawn. And you may have noticed in the past two years, we've done a sponsored tree program. It accumulates around ten thousand dollars of sponsorship money that goes directly to pay for the lights every year. And we would really love to utilize the five large trees and have those professionally wrapped by the company that we use. So, and then have sponsorship signs associated with those trees for the duration that the lights are up. So it would look really clean and match all, everything else that is hung up downtown, but there would be a sponsorship sign associated with that. And those five trees, we could ask for more money since they're large and sort of at the central point of the event. So it'd be around maybe four hundred dollars per tree. So an additional two thousand, since there's five labels on the map.
Well, I always defer to Commissioner Barrett on these issues. He's in, he's more in touch with the needs regarding parking and street usage.
And really this year, we don't have a whole lot that affects the courts, which is good. For the April twenty-ninth and April or September thirtieth, are you just asking for the north half vehicles to be moved?
Yes.
So we can move them to the south half, so we don't have to try to find a place for them?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That, that would be about six vehicles. You just put them in the south. Yes. So that shouldn't be an issue. And then the one on the south where you're requesting for the south lot, I assume we can move them to the north lot. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Because there you're talking another five or six vehicles is all. It would save us putting them in the city lot to the south by hands. It's, my, always my fear is is damage.
Right.
Either during the move and or from the move with people, but that, that, pretty simple this year because your street closings are pretty simple too, so.
Right, and our farmer's market is not in that lot, so we wouldn't be closing down that lot every Saturday. It will be at the amphitheater, which will, you know, we won't have to deal with that this year.
The trees, there, there's nothing that you're tacking into the trees, correct?
No, it could be, it could be put on any way that you guys would prefer. I know it would just match the rest of the signage downtown for the, you know, similar to the other sponsors, but they could be like twist tide, or it could be staked in front of the tree. Or if there's another nifty way that you guys know of, I, I can make anything work.
And I understand that being the City of Franklin, it's, it makes it a little easier, but then what are we opening up for present for other people to advertise on our trees? There's only one Christmas every year. Respect it to that, to the city of Franklin.
Well, will you need any special parking arrangements for the pickleball tournament on June twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth? Just thought I'd throw that in there.
West, West Arena would be really nice. Yeah. We'll let Ron move all the vehicles. Yeah. He'll come in there early. That'll be part of his responsibility. I, I don't have any issue with the parking. This is probably better than it's been in the past, to be honest with you. And the street closures are really a lot better. I think that amphitheater is probably going to make a big difference in that as far as being able to get to the courthouse and things like that, so. To me, this is a lot more efficient for us than it has been. So I don't have any issue with it. The only thing I will ask is if you could put the June tenth, the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth calendars and maybe call Barb Davis or Jason Miller and remind them to move vehicles.
Yeah, that should be totally fine. Yeah, uh-huh, because the event would start the following morning, so.
Yeah, and we can just, if, if maybe you remind us that morning, we can move them that day. So you got it? Okay. I just, I think one time we forgot. We ended up scrambling. I know, I think I was moving cars or something, but anyway. I am making a motion to approve all requested items. Second. I have a motion second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking forward to just some in-person events this year. My goodness, let's get her done.
So, thank you guys. I just want to piggyback on this a little bit. Last year, I don't think the, Steve Burnett, Mayor of City of Franklin, for the record. I don't think that Discover Downtown Franklin last year, Brian, you and I talked about this, they didn't send an invoice, I think, for the usually, it's five hundred dollars that the county helps pay for the Christmas lighting. They didn't send the invoice, which that's on Discover Downtown Franklin. However, I think I want to put a bug in your ear that maybe they'll be coming back and asking you for more than the five hundred dollar donation for holiday lighting at some point this year. I just, what that amount is, I don't have a clue, but I do know that it's been talked about. So I'm just giving you a heads up. I think they will be back along with the Parks Department to ask for a different donation towards Christmas lighting. So just so you know, again, thank you for the great partnerships with the, the county and the city having together and, and Ron, that, that sponsorship is still open. That one there. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I'll get in touch with you guys on paperwork, okay?
I, I've got to ask, so Hops and Vines is still on. It's just not going to be anything that, parking wise, are we still doing Hops and Vines this year? Okay. Okay, I just don't want to miss any. Make sure I'm there. Anyway, thank you. Children's Bureau Ain't Prevent Child Abuse Banner in Pinwheel Gardens for approval.
Hi, this is Linda Hirschman. I'm with Children's Bureau. I'm attending virtually. I just want to make sure you can all hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, great. So at Children's Bureau.
Some of us can, I guess. Hold on, let's see if we can get your volume up. No? Let's try it again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, and we need your name again, ma'am, for the record.
Linda Hirschman, and I'm the Assistant Director at Children's Bureau.
Thank you.
So for Children's Bureau, we help lead the Prevent Child Abuse Council here in Johnson County, and April is Prevent Child Abuse Month. So we are So we are requesting to place our banner and pinwheel garden on the courthouse lawn as we do every year. Um the banner is approximately six feet by three feet, and we use about twenty pinwheels for the garden.
Like we've done this in years past, so I'll move to approve.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll be in touch with the required documentation, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Midstate Amateur Radio Club, September tenth event, which I know this, we did this last year, did we not?
Exactly.
So uh we're coming back again to ask you just to borrow your parking lot for a few hours on a Saturday. Um I'm Jim Williams, I am the Public Information Officer for the Midstate Amateur Radio Club. Are we all familiar with the club?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, great, um we want to hold a public event on the, the county property, the parking lot area. That's in back of the prosecutor's office. What we're going to do there is have what's called a tailgate ham fest. It's a place where people can buy and sell amateur radio equipment. We've been around for almost forty years, we're housed in Franklin. Um we are also a backup communication source uh for weather, other emergency needs within the county. And we coordinate quite frequently with the Director of Emergency Management. If you go back and look at last year's record for this event, uh the prosecutor had some nice comments about the work we do. Uh at the Midstate Club. So we're talking about Saturday, September tenth, uh from about seven in the morning till one in the afternoon. The event itself goes from eight until noon, we'll need one hour uh either side for setup and cleanup. Uh there were no problems of overcrowding last year, the event ran very smoothly, was quite successful. So we'd like to repeat it this year. The number of vendors was approximately fifteen, and we might anticipate one or two more this year. Uh attendees come and go, they stay on the average about half an hour, uh see what they want. So uh we don't make any money off this, it's a public service for the amateur radio community. Uh we took uh ma- made efforts last year to make sure we cleaned up after ourselves, there wasn't much cleanup to do. So uh can I answer any questions? We just like to do the same thing this year that we did last year.
Any paperwork?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be in touch with you after, I'll be in touch with you after Mr. Williams to get the paperwork in order, okay?
That's great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, that, I do show this. Heritage Festival. Franklin Heritage Festival that weekend, I don't know.
Focused, I imagine downtown, probably nice for them to get some more foot traffic out there.
I just have to see that on there, just. Okay, Hornets, two thousand twenty-two dash oh dash two, and ordinance vacating certain alleyway in Needham Township. And at this point, we will need to convene a public hearing today, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. At ten thirty-three AM to receive comment on Johnson County Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash oh dash two. An ordinance vacating certain alleyway in Needham Township. Members of the public appearing at this hearing have a right to be heard regarding the ordinance. Is anyone present this afternoon who would like to be heard, or anyone via Zoom? On this subject? Sir, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Uh my name is Dallas Deich.
And any comments you have, sir?
I apologize, I couldn't be there in person, I have work obligations and um but at least we have Zoom. I was just wanting to get the alleyway vacated because it hasn't been used in quite some time. A little bit because we plan on uh building a house on the lot.
Okay, sir, could you um give me the address of your residence, please?
Uh there's no physical building on the property at this time. It's uh one lot south of thirty-five seventy-nine Harrison Streets, uh Needham, Indiana, four six one six two.
Is, is that your residence, your, that, address of your residence, which is what we need for the record, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, and uh could you spell your name for our auditor that's taking records, please?
Yes, of course, uh first name is Dallas, D A L L A S, last name is Deich, D E I C H.
Dallas Deich, we got it, sir. Thank you, sir, for your comments. Anyone else? Hearing that, uh that we have no more, we will now close the public hearing. Uh and continue on with the vote. Any questions, what's going on there? Second. I have a motion and second to approve as presented, any further discussion?
Is this pending legal or we get all that worked out?
It was all worked out.
Okay, then. Obviously, there was some things going on with it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
We have several, can we do these all? Since they're all for the same, can we do it all in one, if you guys would consider that, please? Drug Free Johnson County, approval of grant agreements under treatment intervention, prevention, education and justice law enforcement.
Do you want to read these on the record, just so everyone's aware of how many that we're actually looking at?
Go right ahead, sir.
I was, you've got somebody on screen that might want to read that.
Hi, um my name is Michelle McMahon, and I'm the Coordinator for Drug Free Johnson County, thanks so much. Um I sent all these in for review. Um this year, I am really excited to share that we are granting out uh ninety-one thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and three cents. Over those three categories, so that's wonderful, um great work being done in our community by our grantees. Uh so I'm asking in treatment intervention for funding um in the amount of thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirteen cents. To go to Reach for Youth at the amount of ten thousand dollars, Heaven and Earth Church for the Recovery Church at the amount of five thousand and forty-two dollars. Terror Treatment Center at seventy-five hundred dollars, Turning Point Domestic Violence Services at four thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirteen cents. And George Junior Republic at four thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. In the prevention education category, um we are asking for funding for Boys and Girls Club of Johnson County. At four thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Girls Inc. of Johnson County at eleven thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Recover Out Loud, which is a new organization, um we're really excited about this. And at three thousand five hundred dollars, uh Clark Pleasant Police Department, one thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars. Upstream Prevention at nine thousand one hundred and one dollars and eight cents. Turning Point Domestic Violence Services at one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And Brave Backers at one thousand dollars, that's actually not on your site. That is a kind of a mini grant, grant for um substance free for a post-trauma event. So we're doing that kind of separate, they don't have a contract, so admit that, please. Um and then in justice and law enforcement, we're asking for Johnson County Adult Probation at three thousand twenty dollars fifty-one cents. Johnson County Community Corrections, two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents. Franklin Police Department, seven thousand forty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Greenwood Police Department, nine thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Greenwood Probation Department, five thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-seven cents. And Johnson County Juvenile Probation Department, three thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Oh, that's a lot, sorry. I talk fast, um we're really excited this year, we have a few new applicants and grantees, and they're doing some great things. I, I mentioned Recover Out Loud, they're going to be doing their second year of an overdose prevention and awareness in Edinburgh. Which uh we know we have some higher use rates and overdose rates in that area. Um Johnson County as a whole, we do know we do have some substance abuse problems. And um we want to make sure people are able to get treatment, we want to make sure that um we just have those resources available. For youth and prevention and families that's needed, so we're just really excited about this year's round of grantees.
Well, I'd get a set of headset or something, eh? They keep going and coming up, whether they move away from the bike or what.
I'm good with all this, someone move to approve, Commissioner Westside, second.
I have a motion and a second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, great work.
Thank you.
Let's officials, department heads, recorder, approval of imaging office systems, ink hardware maintenance support for Skin Pro.
Teresa Petro, Johnson County Recorder. Uh this is just, it's an annual agreement, I talked to him about it in a multiple year, but with the cost. They won't be able to raise their price, I guess, so um we use this software to manipulate uh historical records. That maybe weren't scanned in a readable form and get a good copy, so.
Root for, second.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you, ma'am. Bossia, approval of agreement for legal services with Jay Andrew Woods, PC.
Hi, Lauren Ryan Nielsen, Bossia Director, I just need uh approval for the renewal of the agreement with my attorney, Amy Woods.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Prue will court minister approval to attend the Spring Judicial College, April twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth in Indianapolis. Here she comes.
Andy Kirkendall, community. I believe I emailed a request to Commissioner Baird about the judge's request to attend the Spring Judicial Conference in Indianapolis.
And, and basically, the request is needed for overnight stay, which we allow for anyone else. So that was the only thing that was needed to be considered.
I'm moved to approve, second.
I have a motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Health Department, approval to apply for IDOH two thousand twenty-two dash two thousand twenty-two BP four PHEP grant.
That's a mouth.
That's, you have.
Hi, Betsy Swearingen, Director, Health Department, that's that base and CRI grant that we apply for every year. They've just lumped it into the FEP grant, um and the IDOH used to be ISDH, so yeah, all new. All new titles, uh but just asking for approval to apply.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, that FEP sounds something like my phone says when it doesn't know who's calling.
Right, that's about the same thing, yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
It sounds like it's.
Um Emergency Management, uh approval to apply for the two thousand twenty-two grant, the two thousand twenty-two imp grant. And whatever the other two are.
Steph doesn't look like she's here, oh, there she is.
Stephanie Ceasing, Johnson County Emergency Management Director, it's to apply for all my grants this year. Um the SHSP grant, I will let you know, it's all going to be related to cybersecurity. That's the big push, so that's all we can apply for that grant is for cyber, cybersecurity, so. And then the other ones are my EMPG salary reimbursement, um EMPG competitive grant. And my HMEP, which is our LEPC grant.
Those are all annual grants.
Annual grants, yes, correct.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
I also have something else real quick, tomorrow is the state tornado drill statewide. And Johnson County is going to set ours off at ten o'clock in the morning. And that's for the schools to do their drills before their lunches start, so. I just wanted you guys to be aware of that.
I'm sure we would be wondering when the siren went off, so.
Yes, at ten o'clock tomorrow is the statewide tornado drill.
Thank you, I appreciate that information, have a great day.
Thank you.
Animal Control, approval to apply for Walmart Community Grant Program, which I assume is being done by.
Hello, Emily Conwell, Grant Administrator, the animal. Is going to go for that Walmart grant, um it's a pretty simple grant. Uh we're going to ask for the max, which is five thousand dollars, and it's going to be for Spain New Cross.
Move to approve, second.
I have a motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Emily. And we have uh approval of CR Stafford and Associates AIA contract pending legal and appropriation of funds by council. That will be for the design of the add-on that was presented by ARPA.
Oh, for pending legal and appropriation funds, second.
I have a motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, prosecutor, approval for victims of Crime Act Grant.
It was famous today, it's Grant Monday, she's up here, isn't she?
She moving.
Back again. Emily Conwell, Grant Administrator, um the vocal grant is one that uh occurs every two years. Uh and they currently have this one, uh it supports two staff members, the victim advocate positions. And it also covers travel and training costs, uh they do go out of state to travel and train in for a Nova conference. Um so those, those would be repeating asks. Now, the one conversation that I had last week that began on Thursday, and I've had communication with ICJI. About this, uh and they said that this allowable is the cost for phones, so that would be purchase of the phone and the actual service. And because these positions are hundred percent grant funded, they would be paying for a hundred percent of the costs.
I'm moved to approve on that one.
I have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, thank you again, Emily. Approval to attend the Eastern Regional Interstate Child Support Association Annual Conference in New Orleans.
Everybody on this?
I've, I've been through it, I don't see any issue with it, other than I don't like New Orleans, but that's just me. I wouldn't go there.
Thirty plus, I'm moved to approve, meets all the requirements we've asked for.
It does.
Second.
I have a motion, second, any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries, uh approval of execution of Clark School Road has been stricken, correct?
That's correct.
Road funding discussion.
Good morning. Luke Bastin, Highway Supervisor. I completed and supplied report outlining several of the capital needs that the county is facing when it comes to road and bridge infrastructure. I know that you've not had enough time to go through that yet, but I wanted to present that to you today. And just hit some of the key points that are brought up in the discussion for your consideration. This report is, as I mentioned, related to capital projects, not normal maintenance work that is handled through our annual work program every summer. Of note, we have historically used available savings balances in our highway funds to help fund the local matches or local portions of capital projects. Those are larger projects such as intersection improvement projects that we've done, road reconstruction projects and bridge rehabilitation and replacement projects. Typically, those funds are used to match federal aid grants to help us get those projects completed as the costs are typically more than we can afford within our current funding. By using our savings balances, that has allowed us to maximize the available money for our road maintenance program every summer. But eventually, as with anyone's savings account, it will be spent down. And we have now reached a point where fortunately, we've been awarded quite a few federal aid projects. However, our remaining savings balances in our five highway funds are now committed to the local costs for the projects that are already on the books. If we continue to utilize highway funds to fund the local costs of these capital projects, ultimately, we will have to reduce the size of our annual road maintenance program and build those capital project costs into our budget every year. So one key point is looking at the cash balances of those funds, they appear to be very flush. And they are until you start factoring out those commitments to finish out the projects that we already have underway. Additionally, the report focused on capital needs of four categories facing the county. First and foremost, the high priority road projects on the local road network related to I sixty-nine and those traffic flow changes that are associated with it. The concrete aging concrete streets in many of our neighborhoods and the need for reconstruction for those streets. In addition to that, the growth in the county has not been limited to the northern part of the county. We have a lot of high classification roads in the rest of the county that while do not need additional travel lanes, do need widened and reconstructed with the appropriately appropriate lanewards and shoulders added. In addition to that, there's always a need to keep our bridge projects funded. We have to keep up as best we can with the replacement schedules that are outlined in our bridge inspection reports in order to ensure that those bridges stay safe until we can get to replacement. Moving forward, we should still always pursue federal and state grants for any of these capital improvements as they help stretch our dollars even further. But even then, we will still need local match to provide local match to see those projects through to completion. And given the magnitude of the costs that we're facing on some of these projects, we're going to have to have realistic expectations on the award amounts that we might receive. Eighty percent of a twenty million dollar project is probably not going to be awarded just due to funding availability of the federal and state funds and the competition for those funds.
Big number, three hundred plus million.
It is.
Only, only thing I thought of when I was looking through your diagrams on the presentation, you emailed this this morning. Is where you showed your current savings amounts and those various categories. And then there's some projected out to twenty twenty-six, I think, on projects where somehow you need to factor in what you think your potential savings would be through those periods of time too and add to that, I thought. But you know, I don't know whether they could be significant or not, depending on, like you said, how the weather goes one thing or another.
We're, we're moving at a pace where we're spending the savings faster than it, than it reverts or then it builds up. And the road related funds, MVH, LRS, or MVH restricted, most likely, we will not see significant savings build up over that twenty period to twenty twenty-six. In the bridge fund, we might. If, if all goes well in a given year, the majority of the bridge funds that we budget do end up going into savings. That assumes we don't run into a major bridge repair or, or emergency project that we have to undertake. So there could be a buildup of rich fund balance as long as we don't run into any major unplanned projects that come up. But the MVH and LRS money, I don't have a lot of confidence that those savings will come close to replenishing to anywhere close to the levels that we have right now at state.
You're probably going to see a reduction in local running street with the gas prices at four twenty-five a gallon. Only makes sense if people are going to cut back on driving and so the collection, the tax collection is going to.
Yes, that's definitely a risk.
Be minimal. So you talked about alternative funding. What's your ideas there, Eddie?
Well, alternative funding sources, ultimately, this report will be presented to the council for their consideration. Really, the, the, the main driving point of the, of the report is that we don't really have the ability to fund these capital projects within the funds that we currently have. Now, my area of expertise is the highway funds in terms of understanding the revenue and tracking that. I can't say I'm that well versed in what other funding options might be available. But there, there, I'm sure are some potentially income tax, potentially contributions from the general fund, assuming that there are funds available in that regard. There may be other avenues that I'm just not aware of. That's beyond what we normally deal with, with our current funds.
I caught about every third word. So what was your idea on funding?
I don't have one. If you if you caught every third word, those were the words. Yeah.
Well, we're looking at bonding, but you still have to have the revenue source to satisfy the bonds, of course.
Yes.
I'm still hopeful that maybe with the ARPA funds that legislators might eventually relax some of us and let us use that. That'd be that would be very important to what we got to do short term. I'm always, I'm always a little bit reluctant to put out that big number, that three hundred million because that tends to just boggle people's minds on what we really can, can do and the priorities that we need to address.
And, and they're
Timeline on three hundred million, about four lifetimes.
Of yours or mine?
Yours. Be about a half.
When dog years you did.
Regardless of, of what, if any additional funding sources are identified, the amount of need is going to be impossible for us to address in the near future. And so like identifying those higher volume roads in the more rural areas of the county, that need is not as pressing right now as the need we're facing related to the I sixty-nine road work that needs to be done. But that needs to be on the radar for a long term. But this dollar amount, it's, it's jarring. It certainly is. But the report is intended to be essentially identify the needs. How many of those we can ultimately fund and how we prioritize those would still be determined. But both short and long term need were, were the goals of identification in this report.
So as the attorneys would, would highway work come under public safety?
No.
No? I, I think we can make it, make an argument there that.
I don't. But that doesn't mean there are other ways. That we can discuss.
Well, it's actually.
Yeah, you're welcome.
You want to introduce that gentleman behind you?
He's got more, he's got some psychos.
Oh, you may not have actually attended a meeting in person yet since Daniel's been here. I don't know.
Oh, that's right. You've been out of town for the last couple.
Before we, before we go to that, the approval of agreement with Williams Tree Company for tree clearing services will be pending legal. Go ahead and get that out of the way.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate this being added to the agenda. We requested four quotes from tree companies for removal of trees needed for the Stones Crossing and Saddle Club Roundabout Project. Unfortunately, we received only one response, but that was from Williams Tree Company LLC. Requesting your approval of the service agreement for sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty dollars to remove those trees ahead of project construction.
I'm going to move for approval pending legal with, with bats in mind because this has to be time sensitive before the April first.
Have a motion in a second. Any further?
Luke, did you bring with you the ones that you solicited that didn't respond? The names?
The, the four companies that were requested quotes from were Save a Tree, N and S, Browns, and then Williams.
Thank you.
Just so we know.
We had plenty out there.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Luke. Now.
Morning, Daniel Johnson, the new highway engineer.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
He's doing a good job. He's getting his feet wet and drinking from fire hose.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, thanks, sir. Appointment of Johnson County Public Library Board Member, which the request is for Mr. Dan Mitchell, who is currently on there and serving as our appointment. Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Acceptance of lowest quote in contract pursuant to IC thirty-six dash one dash twelve best drive for new ceiling in the highway garage.
We have three quotes. The first is from Duke Commercial for twenty-three thousand two hundred and eight dollars, two three two zero eight point zero zero. The second from an extra hand for twenty-two thousand dollars, two two zero 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 point zero zero. And the lowest quote was from CW Snead for nineteen thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars, one nine four nine six point zero zero.
Yes, I would give these bids to Brian. I guess you've been looking at this with Luke.
Yeah. Okay. No, it's actually with Jason and Randy previously.
That'd be Bob. Okay. I would move to approve review for CW Snead or review all the quotes, but just make sure it's complete. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash oh dash four, an ordinance authorizing distribution and or expenditure of the proceeds of Johnson County's grant from the American Rescue Act of two thousand twenty-one. And those are, that is listed here that we have for approval today under ordinance, a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to go to the watersheds project, a hundred thousand to the animal shelter improvements for professional services and the hundred thousand for Drake Road Project for professional services. Those are the three that we are bringing before council if approved.
I would move to approve.
Have a motion in a second. Any further?
One thing I do want to ask on what we're pertaining to these funds is the whole thing that we brought from the ARPA committee. Do we know when those will be coming in front of us for the whole? I mean.
I don't know if you're ready yet.
Okay.
These are the only three that seem like they were ready.
Okay.
And even these, there, there's going to be a follow-up that has a more detailed plan because obviously this is not very fleshed out at the moment. But I'm also aware that the plans, you know, we're being flexible. We're adjusting them as we go. So we may not have all the information we need to make that more specific detail plan. So there's that. I guess I would suggest that you have another ARPA committee meeting and go from there. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I'd like to, because I know especially on broadband phones and things like that, and I'd like to see that get going.
Yeah, that's why I was kind of asking. I want to the wheels of government don't turn fast. And I want to basically have a little bit more in-depth discussion about that and move that, move these forward, even if we're pending legal, to move them forward, to get them to the next level, to keep these, keep it moving. Because otherwise, I mean, we made the ordinance and pushed it forward, but at our ARPA committee meeting, but we really need to come between us three to figure that out. So.
And I know Commissioner West wasn't here for the committee meeting, so we really need to get him involved in that. See if we could maybe, if you and Barb could get, going to come up with some dates, maybe spread it to the
No, we weren't discussing.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of Johnson County Court Services Agreement.
Ready for this? We got a big contingency at her today. Talk about this.
Is there anyone coming forward to speak on it or?
You want to speak on it, Brandy or Judge Nugent? You want to, or Angela?
Randy Kirkendall, Court Administrator. You all have been provided a copy of the proposal to unify a new department, which we are calling Court Services. It's been in the works for several months. You want me to explain what it is? You want
You might.
To understand.
Give a flyover. I mean, we've seen it. I've seen it. I just, I know there's a lot that's gone into this for quite some time, and I appreciate everyone's efforts on this because this has been a big, big lift on this one. So.
I've spent, you know, a lot of time with this too, as far as understanding it. So I think I don't know if you have any questions, Commissioner, but I know you haven't been quite as.
Obviously, I haven't been involved at the level that you have maybe in, in Commissioner Walls. But I had a nice meeting with Judge Nugent and Brandy the other day. We talked about what concerns I had. They, they answered my questions. Is the only thing that, that I want to say publicly about it is I, I, I did have some reservation on the second or third command, maybe in the probation department, being the director of community corrections. Because I, I always felt like community corrections director needed some exceptional talents in various areas of money raising and so on and so forth. And I'm not sure that not disperging anybody in probation, their abilities, but I was, I was just not sure that a second and third or third commander would have those necessary skills. Or third command there would have those necessary skill levels to to meet the needs of that position. So that was the only reservation I had in regard to the way it's structured right now.
And I will tell you that at the last Community Corrections Advisory Board meeting, the board voted to start the selection process. And accept resumes and that person, that position isn't going to be filled currently by an existing. Probation employee. It was a standalone request for applicants. So. The judges and a committee met to to interview candidates based on what you're talking about, the selection being. A Community Corrections Director and that those talents be determined by that committee. So the recommendation from that committee is going to the board this Wednesday for who that person is is slated to be.
Well, hopefully, under this new new structure that you're putting in place. We'll see an acceleration of a new facility, maybe.
We would love that.
Needed. And and like I've talked about on numerous occasions, be able to begin some rehabilitative effort in a way of. Therapeutic communities and so on and so forth to and then, of course, keep it solvent.
Sure.
That's a critical issue. I know we went years ago, we went through a period of time. With Community Corrections where it wasn't solvent. They were losing money. Then it got turned around and Albert went out there, but. That's that's important also. But if it works good and the efficiencies are there and the communication, I've already heard from the sheriff that that's greatly improved. So that's good.
I think the structure, having the structure in place like it's proposed is going to to create those avenues. So we're we're. Having positive feedback about that already.
I'm with much happiness on this. I'm going to move to approve this restructuring of. The Court Services. Second.
I'm motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing them, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for the hard work you put into this. I know it's been it's been a struggle.
We will take it to the council tonight and then to the advisory board on Wednesday and. Get moving.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Hope your voice gets better.
Thank you. I'll go get some in a second. Thank you.
See you, Bob.
Yes, Johnson.
I was going to bring that bed in for him to drive to, but not if he sits. I don't want him in my car. New new whole business claims.
Oh. I have a few. June now the tension had charged it. I can't remember now whether it was on a credit card or the claims. Anyway, for Nike products, it looked like from Edinburgh Mall. Two invoices, one for three hundred and forty nine seventy six, the other six hundred and thirty nine sixty six. I'm just curious as to what that was, but let me just address T-shirt Express.
I can check on the Nike products, but I'm sure that that's probably paid for by a grant and it's an awards program. Complete where the kids complete programs and then they get certain awards, but I can double check.
Yeah, okay. Well, keep in mind, even though it's grand dollars, there still has to be some prudence and how it's spent. So let's talk about T-shirt Express, my favorite subject up to the point now where I'm really getting aggravated about it, be quite honest with everybody. And I'll just give an example. Between the credit card charges and the and the claims. We had six purchases from T-shirt Express. Fleet, a hundred and seventy six dollars, corner, five hundred and eighty two dollars. Animal shelter, four hundred and sixty seven fifty, community corrections, a hundred and sixteen. Sheriff and jail, a hundred and thirty, and a survey, a hundred and fifty two. I don't really want to get started hearing me holler and complain about this, but I just don't think it's appropriate to use the taxpayers' dollars. To furnish clothing for a lot of these employees when it's not needed. And I go back to what I've said before. If your job description is such that it's wearing your clothes out or causing damage to it, then we ought to consider maybe a rental system. Much like they use at the highway department. But beyond that, I just don't think it's appropriate to spend these kind of dollars clothing employees. Because we've got a lot of a lot of employees and I'm sure employees in all the other departments would love to have pull over fleece sweaters and T-shirts and things of that nature. So till somebody convinces me otherwise, I I just can't understand why, first off, the council was responsible for this. And I'm going to talk to the council members when they continue annually to appropriate clothing allowances. Our clothing line item in these various offices is beyond me. And I addressed Mike's out there at the corner. I addressed this with him in my email. Where I I understood that his employees are on call twenty four hours a day. As needed, right? So that would necessitate to wear these T-shirts and pull over fleece sweaters twenty four hours a day. And I don't think that that would be appropriate or would necessarily be rational in in. Whatever they're doing, whether they're working another job or doing recreational or whatever. So they either got wet or they got to take time to go home, put it on. And again, I don't know how how effective that is. If we're using clothing for identification, there's a much better way to do that with name badges and pictures on the name badge. And I think that is one is more cost effective. Two, it's more appropriate and I think signifies the individual much better than a T-shirt with a logo stamped on it. So. I'm going to continue to complain about it until somebody else does something, at least the council hopefully will eventually. Own up here and begin to do something in this regard. That's my sermon.
I got the answer.
Okay.
Take credit cards away.
Well, these aren't these aren't all credit cards. These are in claims.
If if it's done by P O system, then if we disapprove it, then they're going to have a hard time paying for it. Long as it's on the credit card, we're screwed.
Yeah, I'm long advocated for a purchase order arrangement.
You have to take one positive away from this, though.
Huh?
You have to take one positive away. They're buying local.
I guess. Well, sixteen hundred and twenty three dollars and fifty cents total. Just in this one. One claim. Other than that, I moved to prove.
I have a motion in the second. Any further?
Yeah.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
That's the other than that, Mrs. Lincoln. How do you enjoy the play?
I post. Motion carries. I like that.
Yeah.
I like. Commissioners minister approval to fourteen twenty two regular meeting to sixteen twenty through two special meeting, ARPA committee to twenty two. Twenty two special meeting and three, three twenty two special meeting.
Move to approval. Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. Motion carries. That takes care. Any other thing under new business, anything?
I'll see if it's going to get crucified by you.
T-shirt probably brought up. Well, we'll be sure to mention it. It's just no, yeah, public comment.
Betsy Swearingen, Director of the Health Department, just wanted to let you know that today is the first day that we will have our testing site in our vaccination clinic. Located at the Health Department at four sixty North Morton. We are no longer at Compass Park. Completely vacated on Friday. So come see us there if you need anything. Testing will still be drive up. You'll pull into a parking spot. Call the phone number that's there. We'll come out to you and vaccine is inside in our lobby.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I did double check on the space heater from claims last month. It was those hot hands that you, the little packets that you wear, that you put in your shoes and your hands. When you're outside and it was from my testing staff when they were trying to write in.
We kind of assumed it was for something.
So we didn't buy a space heater because I didn't want to violate the personnel or the personnel policy.
As long as it passes.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Arts and Minds screen clear?
Move to a adjourn.
Yeah, John shared it.
Well, I asked him to be here. I thought we were going to have a little bit more in depth discussion on the ARPA funds.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I I really think that would be for the committee to discuss so we can bring it forward from that.
I thought we did.
We did. I I think those those funds need to. To move as quickly as possible. So I think get this meeting set up and get a final destination.
Somebody needs to bring Commissioner West up speed on it. That's what I thought we were doing today. Moving along, but obviously not. So.
Minutes have a lot of information pertaining to me.